I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Roll call, please.
Chair Wolf.
Here.
Vice Chair List.
Here.
Member Lowry.
Here.
Member Roby.
Here.
Member Friend.
Here.
Being the new guy in a new spot, I have a question about the consent calendar. Have we been actually treating the consent calendar as a consent calendar?
We do unless someone has a reason to pull off either the agenda itself or the minutes. Move to adopt.
Thank you. Signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. We'll move on to items of interest to the public. This is the opportunity to speak on any item that's not on the agenda tonight, and we can't take any action on whatever items there are. If you wish to speak on anything that's not on the agenda, the podium's available. Don't all rush at once. Okay, thank you. We'll move on to communications.
We moved so quickly through the consent calendar. There was a comment received just prior to the meeting today from former member Drobish. He had some clarification, question about the minutes as it relates to the compact parking stalls at the width of eight feet, and the minutes, I believe, reflect a minimum of seven feet. So I don't know if that, if the, this body wants to reevaluate the adoption of the minutes to consider his request. It's entirely up to you.
As I recall, this is awkward, so...
Well, if I can, before you start, the applicant proposes to build eight-foot stall width.
Correct. That's right. And I thought my motion required that. And the reason I know this is because Mr. Drobish sent me a text during the meeting, which is highly irregular and not approved, on that item specifically. And I will admit that I actually did re-look at what was proposed, and while the idea was good, my motion, I thought, was specific to that. So we may need to go back and look at that. The applicant was proposing what I thought was appropriate, and I was going to hold the applicant to that. And I'll admit in public my uncomfortableness, discomfort, my level of discomfort with having received the text, so.
And then perhaps the appropriate procedure would be a motion to reconsider the previous action taken.
Do we need to do that? I thought my motion was specific to requiring the eight.
Well, if the minutes don't reflect your intent, then that's what needs to be amended.
Page four of the minutes.
That's not, thank you, Commissioners. That's not something that staff can go back and review the tape and review the motion that was made for precision. It has to be reopened at this point.
Well, tonight's action is to consider the review of the action taken.
All right. Then what I will do is, I want to, I'll move that we reconsider adoption of the consent calendar, and specifically pull the minutes for the purpose of not approving the minutes at this meeting, hold them over to the next meeting until I have an opportunity to review what was in the minutes, and also review the tape specifically, so that I can make sure that I offer a precise correction if necessary. Because I'm just not in a position to do that this evening. That's my motion.
So we have a motion. Do we need a second, have a second for, to reconsider that particular item at the next meeting? I'll second. Thank you. Signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any ayes?
For the record, who's seconded the motion. Thank you.
Thank you for that.
That was the only communication this evening.
All right. Thank you. All right. We'll move on to the informational presentation on the Placerville Commons project.
Would you like me to begin?
Yes, sir.
Okay. This item is before you tonight as basically a courtesy of the project applicant, Mr. Jerry Walls, who's rising, has made his way up to the podium. He is the project applicant and the property owner for the property at 1990/2000 Broadway, which is a project called the Placerville Commons Project. It's a senior housing complex, 84,000 square feet in floor area. The planning commission, earlier this year, February 3rd, conditionally approved this request under conditional use permit 2014-02 and site plan review 2014-05. One of the specific questions the commission imposed upon the project was that the applicant, this is condition number 56, which is on page one of your staff report, or your memorandum on this item. "The applicant shall submit to staff for review and approval prior to building permit issuance, architectural modification to the building's north elevation to achieve the planning commission's objective of building visual interest and to disrupt the monolithic appearance of the north elevation, which may include the use of materials, color, window treatment, dimensional variability, and landscaping taken in combination." Staff has met with Mr. Walls on a couple of occasions since planning commission's approval, and last month, he did approach the city with revised elevations. Staff enthusiastically approved these for the project. Large versions of what's in your staff report are behind you on the wall to give you an idea of the materials, colors, textures that he has proposed, and staff has approved for the site. Once again, Mr. Walls is available to answer any questions and maybe provide you with a little bit more input. I guess I'll add one more thing. You're not asked to condition or approve these. This was left to staff to approve, but again, this is an informational item that he wanted to come back to you and share with you the final elevations for the project.
So do you have some things you'd like to say in addition to his report?
No, I'm just here to answer the questions you guys might possibly have concerning the project. Like you said, I believe what we've come up with is absolutely beautiful, the digits that I picked are very nice up there on Broadway compared to what we turned in previously. I personally didn't...
Care for much myself, but I think this is a beautiful architectural structure.
This is our time to ask questions or comments. Anybody?
This condition was my language, and I was one of the commissioners that was fairly adamant that we do something better. So I have three comments. One, I want to thank you for what you have brought as an alternative to what we saw previously, and I concur that it's a far better offering. Second, it's unfortunate that we did not have the before and after, because these are fairly dramatic in their own right. But if you'd had a before and after right here, I think it would just be overwhelmingly...
I agree.
An overwhelming improvement. And I want to thank those commissioners that were supportive of requiring the applicant to do this, and I want to thank staff, and I would hope that staff would keep the before and after around as a training opportunity, because I really think that this is something that could have come in and staff could have looked at it and said, you know, maybe something a little bit, a little bit different. So this provides a great example for future reference. So I'm really happy with what you brought here this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you for sharing tonight.
Very good. I appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Okay. Guess we'll move on to new business. Item 8.1, the Western Slope Boys and Girls Club Final Landscaping and Irrigation Plan, Site Plan Review. The project's up on Mallard Lane, and per condition three of the city's conditional approval of the project, a final landscaping plan and irrigation plan in accordance with City Code Section 10-4-9 is subject to review and approval of the planning commission prior to issuance of a construction permit for the construction of the club facility building and infrastructure improvements for the use. So tonight, we're looking at the landscaping plan and irrigation plan, and it seems as though the other entitlements are in place. So I guess we'll move to a staff report.
Yeah. Staff doesn't have too much more to add to that, other than staff has reviewed this request for compliance and considerations under the city's site plan review criteria, as well as of our, as well as the city of Placerville Development Guide. The plan concept, which you will hear from the applicant's experts here, they're going to provide you with more detail than I'm going to provide right now, but their drought tolerant concept here, I think, is well noted and should be supported by this body, certainly by staff, in this drought environment in which we currently reside. Staff finds that the request meets the city's criteria with just one exception, related to the screening of the backflow prevention device, which I've called out in the staff report, which would involve the addition of a couple more ground cover or combination shrubs to screen that. And then another condition, which is more of a housekeeping item related to North Eros prominently shown and consistent with other planned documents. So with that, I, you know, we've got representatives of Architectural Nexus here in the audience who can go over more detail and answer questions about the plant palette, plant location, et cetera. So that concludes my report. Staff enthusiastically supports the request, and that the commission make the finding and conditions on pages four and five of staff's report.
Thank you. So we'll open the public hearing on this item and hear from the applicant and his agents. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Charlie Downs with Architectural Nexus, and very pleased to be here tonight. What you see before you represents really quite a departure from where we were with our previous plan. When the condition was put on the project to come back to the commission with a final landscape plan, we seized the opportunity and really went forward with a much more water-conscious, drought-tolerant, zero-scape type of an approach. And so what you see before you has been designed by our site planning group. I have Heather Olson here tonight from Architectural Nexus, our landscape designer. Felicia Reyes is here to answer questions you might have relative to the club itself. But the basic concept behind this plan is to put in plant material that is very expressive, colorful, has great form, and represents, you know, really how severe this current climate condition is, and something that anticipates that this may be the new norm. So what we'll have is an irrigation system that we hope will be just a temporary irrigation system until the plant material is able to establish itself. So there's a combination of indigenous plants and a lot of different drought tolerant plants. So with that, Heather, do you want to add anything? And then we'll open it up for any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Heather Olson. I'm the on-staff landscape designer for Architectural Nexus, and I don't have a whole lot to add. Charlie gave a great intro. One thing I thought that was really pertinent is at the top of the agenda report that Andrew so kindly provided says "Placerville, a unique historical past forging into a golden future." And I just wanted to bring that to light, because that kind of exposes some of the inspiration that I had in choosing some of the plant material that would support what defines the golden future for Placerville. And we took it upon ourselves to really imagine ourselves as residents and community members here, what we would like to see if this were our Boys and Girls Club in our own backyard. And so with that being said, I'm more than happy to answer any specifics about either of the plans, sets that we've given you, or about the landscape narrative itself.
Does any of the staff have any, I mean, the commission have any questions for the applicant?
I couldn't find the actual dimensions of the backflow prevention device that staff was suggesting should have some additional screening. What are the dimensions on that?
As Heather's scaling that off and providing you with the answer, that condition of approval of additional screening, we've got that covered, so no issue whatsoever there. Thank you.
I was going to offer an alternative. I mean, which is fine. Thanks, Charlie. Appreciate that. Let me ask this question. This will be, and this is for the chair. Would it be amenable to a mural of any kind?
No.
I don't know what structurally it looks like, so...
It's a little box.
A little tiny box. But you couldn't have like a little tiny, it's a Boys and Girls Club. All right. Well, if it's that small...
You're probably thinking of like these electrical boxes that a lot of cities now are taking and putting murals on and having...
Yeah.
Yeah, it really doesn't lend itself to that.
Okay. Well, then I'm happy with the applicant's...
And in fact, it'll have freeze protection on it and that kind of thing, so.
All right. Just an opportunity for a little bit of artwork.
Yeah. Well, again, we have no problem, you know, providing some additional shrubs.
Appreciate that, and thank you.
One quick question. Is there an actual small structure around the backflow prevention, or is it simply encased in some sort of freeze prevention material?
Yeah. We, there's no structure around it, and as Andrew had suggested, we would just propose to add additional shrubs to screen it.
Great. Works for me. Any other questions for the applicant and the team? All right. We'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the planning commission for discussion.
I do have one question for staff. We don't have a lighting plan for this. There was no lighting plan that goes along with this. I don't recall.
I believe the lighting plan was approved.
Lighting plan was approved. Okay. Thank you. I'd be happy to move adoption, Mr. Chairman, but I won't yet.
Okay. Thank you. Go ahead.
I had a general question, either for the board or staff. Several places, there is mentioned a landscape maintenance agreement. Is that a boilerplate agreement? Is it generic? Or is it something that's tailored to the specific applicant? And I guess the last part of that multi-part question is, how many of these are in place? And part B to that last part of the question is, how are they enforced? Or are they?
Okay. Part one, or part one, A, B, and C, D. The, yes, the city has a, I wouldn't want to use the word boilerplate, but we do use a form. The form very rarely is specific to a particular location. It is, I guess, in your term, a boilerplate document, but it's specific to this site, because it references the parcel numbers involved, the address, the property owner, et cetera. This agreement, as some members here who have been here longer, they understand that it's agreement that the city requires of every landscape plan that comes before this body as it relates to a site plan review approval. So the agreement will require the property owner to maintain the landscaping in perpetuity. And the city is signee of this agreement. It allows the city to enter the property if we need to, if we find that the property's not being maintained, landscaping's not being maintained, not being watered, et cetera. Or there are cases where properties have been abandoned, and the landscape agreement is still in place, and so that agreement type would allow us to enter the property to maintain the landscaping, and then we can bill the property owner for our time and water for that purpose. The quantity of agreements that we have, I think that was one of your questions. I don't have that information handy, but the enforcement is that this is a deed restriction. It goes on the property, so it becomes part of the title. And the city has administrative sanctions, and if we need to, we can bring a project back to this body for revocation of a site plan review or conditional use permit where a landscape plan may have been a component.
Thank you. I appreciate that.
Anyone else? Comments for staff? Comments? Just, I'd like to weigh in a little bit. Being an architect myself, I really, and a resident of Placerville for now, what's becoming a long time, it's really nice and refreshing sometimes when people talk about good design and take the time to describe it. And I think the narrative that was provided was very helpful. And sometimes you think it's just so much, you know, so much hooey to read stuff like this, but it's really, it's important to, once in a while, take time and write and talk about good design. And I think the, my takeaway from reviewing the drawings and the design, it's, this is a masterful design for the site, and I'm prepared to support it. Is there a motion?
I move that we accept the recommendations and conditions found on page four and five.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. That's been motioned and seconded to approve the staff report as in conditions as described on page four and five. Any additional discussion? Let's take a roll call vote.
Vice Chair List. Aye. Member Friend.
Yes.
Chair Wolf.
Yes.
Member Lowry.
Yes.
Member Roby.
Yes.
Thank you. The motion carries.
Mr. Chairman, if I could kind of tag along to your comments and for staff, this is at least the third project now that I can name, the EID building being another, and the Fausel House project being a third, where we do have exception, and the Home Depot, I think, clearly would be a fourth. And there may be others where there is, in fact, exceptional designs, and it would seem that if the city began to compile a list of exhibits for other applicants to come in, and we could direct them and say, you know, you might want to take a look at these. Here are some exemplary examples of landscape architecture, as well as a very significant water conservation. I think that could become as useful as our plant palette that we have for folks. So just an observation.
Thank you. I concur. All right. You can stay for the fun if you want.
It's really a generous offer.
Thank you. All right. We'll move on to item 8.2, Annual Planning Commission Bylaw Review, which we forwarded from last, our last meeting, and I guess we'll defer to staff to start with.
Yeah. I can, I just looked at our records here, and I can't, we kind of keep track of, we kind of, we do keep track of amendments made to the bylaws over the years, and it looks like there's a reference here from a document from 2007 where some amendments were made. But they relate back to the original bylaws, which, my understanding, were adopted by this commission back in 92. So it gives you an idea how long these have been in play, so to speak. They are entirely the work of this body. So although staff back in 92 may have assisted with their form and function, but it's my understanding that these were derived out of the work by the commissioners at the time. And that's about all I can tell you, other than I do bring this back every year as an idea and a suggestion that we look at these things, and if there are amendments that need to be made, you know, every year, then I want to give you guys the opportunity to certainly do that. And here we are.
Thank you. Anybody have any items they want to bring up?
I've read it through, and I think it still serves our needs quite well.
I support Commissioner Lowry, but I do have a few areas that I thought I wanted to raise. I actually surprised myself, because I know that I, I don't know if you, Commissioner, were you, Mr. Chairman, if you were involved in the review of these back in 2007. I had no expectation of making any comments. I thought they were perfect. But I, there are a couple of things I'd actually like to bring to our attention if I could. Some of them may seem somewhat obscure, starting on page one, Article Four, Meetings Number D, and it talks about that we may adjourn to another time and place at the direction of the chair. That's fine. It says, "The chair shall give public notice," and I was just wondering about the use of that term, "public notice." And if that term does not actually have a very specific meaning, because whenever you do a public notice of this meeting, it has to be 48 or 72 hours in advance, it has to be posted, and if we use the term "public notice," or if there's a better term that we should use for that. Just a question. You can revert to counsel if you want.
Okay. In this context, the, a notice could be, could be defined as a verbal notice by the chair announcing to the public, because we are televised, it goes out of this building, and obviously to the people who are here, that announcing that this body will adjourn to a particular date and time and place. I believe that's what the intent is. But the language, however, I suppose, could be modified to reflect...
So if you said something more along the lines of, "The chair shall announce," as opposed to give public notice, again, I'm just, I realize that's an obscure, that's the most obscure one I have this evening, by the way. But public notice is a fairly specific requirement of how, of the Brown Act, I believe. And I'm just wondering if maybe, you know, using the word "announce" or some other verbiage might be, maybe should be looked at. Gives me no heartburn.
If I can pile on that item with you. The, I was a little unclear about this. I see this as kind of the, this is the abandon ship clause. This is the power that you would use if a meeting is occurring, and it's a difficult meeting, and you need to end it, or you don't have enough information to keep the meeting going, or there's some overriding issue. That's what I thought this was.
Actually, we've actually adjourned meetings and gone on a site visit and continued the meeting there. That's what I thought this was about. But it certainly could be an abandon ship.
Yeah. It could be an act of God, because of the weather outside, we need to, we need to close shop and get back.
Right. Whatever. I'm just, again, I just looked at the term "public notice" and thought, you know, that's a fairly prescript, you know, specific term. And if counsel is happy, that's fine, and that, it gives no heartburn to me, so.
These, this language is yours. It's not counsel's.
The other one I circled on page three, Article Nine, Order of Business, and I never caught this before. "The order of business at regular meetings shall be as follows." Not recommended to be as follows, but shall be as follows. And I'm not challenging that. I'm just bringing it to folks' attention, that that's a fairly prescriptive, this is exactly how you're going to do it in this order. And if that's the case, there were a couple of things. And B, at the top of page four, we have the call to order, and since our agendas always say call to order and pledge of allegiance, it seems to me that the bylaws should reflect call to order and pledge of allegiance, because that's what we always do. Then going down to items J and K, again, with that "shall" word, it essentially compels us to do educational workshop sessions before the environmental assessments and public hearings, and I can anticipate where we actually might want to reverse that. In fact, I can think of some times when we have done that, and I'm just wondering if some language about flexibility would not necessarily be a bad thing with that.
Staff can add to that as well. You will notice in the agendas that I'm... You will notice in the agendas that I'm preparing for you, especially members who have been here and served for quite some time, they'll notice that I don't include all these items. If we don't have a subject matter, I don't put it on there.
Yeah.
So, so do I follow it? I guess technically I don't. So I would support the change of the language from that more definitive "shall" to some other descriptor would be, would be something staff would certainly support.
On page five, Article 10, B six, and this is, again, the order for each specific agenda item, I would actually strike number six, and then, because what we actually do then is C, is, C would be, the chair asks if there are any questions of staff by commissioners, right? So that's, that's a very specific step, and I'm a big proponent of that happening before opening the public hearing, that gets a lot of, there can be questions, we can get clarified ahead of time. Then C, it seems to me that, which would then become possibly D if we do a reordering, the chair opens the public hearing, and the first thing is, they call upon the applicant to present a request. That's actually what happens, but I think opening the public hearing is a specific, yes, Mr. Painter?
The, you have to understand that the way this language is set up, it's for every agenda item, not every agenda item is a public hearing item.
Okay.
For instance, the informational item tonight technically was not a public hearing. Do we still want to follow the same protocol? It's just a question.
Sure, fair enough, except the way this is, the way this is written, particularly number two, which I have circled, "attempt to prove when necessary that the granting request will be in the public interest." And I guess since you have "when necessary" as sort of an escape clause, you don't have to, you don't have to deal with that. Again, I'm just raising it if you want to take a look at it and see if you can tighten it up. And I believe the very last one I have on the same page, D one, are folks required to actually give their address? I thought that, that's come up, and I don't know that they actually have to give their address, they have to state their name, and that they're from Placerville or not, or something, but I don't think they have to provide their address.
Yeah, Member Friend, you may, you may remember this discussion, I think we had it during, when Member Ogden was, was a member on the commission, and I remember that discussion, and the language was changed where it was much more definitive that you must to, I believe the invited language was put in there, that each person is invited to the lectern, to, actually, we could put to state their name and address. It's an invitation, it's not an obligation.
It's unclear from reading this if they have to state their.
I see.
Let's let somebody else talk.
I'm done.
On, on that issue, if I'm not mistaken, when the public speaks before a school board, it's required that they fill out a three-by-five card with their name and address.
I can't speak for the school board, but under California law, we are not, this body would not be required to ask for a person's name or their address, but we can ask them. For our records, it's helpful for us to put in the minutes who spoke, otherwise I have to put down unknown speaker, and if someone wants to challenge an action by this body, it's actually beneficial that their name is in the record, so we're actually assisting them, but we can't obligate them. Again, I can't speak to the, to the school district, school board, but.
No, I understand you can't, but, but my point was that then we have a more clear record of who spoke, and that's what you're asking for.
But even in that context, they would not be required to fill out a card, but yeah, we could ask them to, and many, many bodies that I'm aware of do.
Sometimes you, you might have somebody come in here that is from out of town, and we don't really need to listen to them.
Well, that gets, what I, what I had a question about was, isn't our, the intent, I've always thought the intent here was to know if the person's a resident, where they're a resident of, whether it's Placerville or somewhere, somewhere else. I would be quite reluctant to give my address, like, over the airwaves here.
Right.
So I, maybe we should just ask for city of residence rather than address.
That's the city council's practice.
What, just ask for the city?
Just, when, when somebody comes to the lectern, they're asked to give their name and their city residence, and that's where the practice.
Doesn't Susan Zito go out and, and get their names specifically? I think I've seen, when people speak, she goes and actually records that separately.
Most of the time she chases them down.
Yeah.
I know from, from, from staff's perspective, yeah, having a comment card available for people to fill out, it's certainly helpful for us in the minutes, because then we would have their correct spelling of their names, we're not having to guess, or go out in the audience after other people, or during while other people are speaking in order to get the appropriate person and their, and their spelling of their name. So I don't, I don't disagree with, let's not, not have it, but I don't think we can compel anyone to fill it out, I think that's really the bottom line. Or even give them their, their name to you, but we can certainly ask.
Well, I would be happy, because I concur with my fellow commissioners, that knowing whether or not someone is a city resident, I think is germane, I don't think, the address is what I got hung up on with, right, obviously, if there's some way, we are inviting them to the lectern and to state whether or not they're a resident of Placerville. Again, they don't have to comply, but I think that's what we would always ask, that would be in our bylaws, to ask.
I have a suggestion, perhaps the language could read as simply, as simple as, "Each person speaking is invited to the lectern and asked to provide their name and where they live." Ask them, not.
Would it not make sense to include the word voluntarily? Because we can't really compel them to do it anyway, as I understand it. So I would propose that it say, "Each person speaking is invited to the lectern to voluntarily provide their name and city of residence."
Okay, so, it's a, it's a public hearing, and we're doing the city's business. I have a problem with the scenario of a line of anonymous speakers coming up and saying, "I don't like this, I don't like that, and you can't have my name." Well, then, don't expect it to get read in the record, I must, it certainly wouldn't get read into my mental record. If you can't, if you can't provide your name to go with your opinion, stay home.
In a circumstance like that, I would put in the minutes, "Unknown speaker," or plural, unknown, unknown speakers, because I wouldn't have any, I couldn't address them in gender, I couldn't do, I would have to, either, either they provide the name, or they don't. So I think in my tenure here, I think I've done that twice, three times maybe, when someone just, either we didn't capture it, it wasn't asked, or they just refused to, I can't remember which, but.
And in the same, and in the same breath, I would say I'm sensitive to the privacy concerns, and the privacy concerns, you know, where I work at the state, you know, it's constantly, those things are getting tighter and tighter all the time. And, I mean, we have, we have a cadre of about 17 volunteers, and we have to be very careful of how we handle their personal information. So, if we look at the, you may speak, let's see, items of interest to the public, "Personal attacks or comments which may invade an individual's personal privacy will not be tolerated." So, to be consistent with what's in the language in number five, I think we need to drop the address requirement. I think the city of residents provides useful context. I mean, I've spent many nights in the, in the city council meetings where, and especially, there's, there's often a list of people who come to the lectern quite regularly to hold forth, and on whatever it is, whether it's the color of the curbs or window treatments. And I got to tell you, I find it useful to know if they live in the city or not, in terms of my evaluation of their testimony.
Well, I support Commissioner Lowry's position, I guess we're, we're up against though what we can, what we can actually require. We can encourage, I agree with dropping the address, so I don't think there's any disagreement about that, and I believe the rest fellow commissioners are similarly disposed, but we can only ask them to give us an indication if they're a resident or not, and put a little bit of pressure on them, because certainly if someone doesn't want to say, then that's out there publicly, and, and, you know, kind of, I think taints their, diminishes their testimony, as I agree.
It actually might be more correct to, to change the, the title of that subsection D to, because the chair is the one who's going to invite people to come to.
Yes.
The podium. And so the chair could then ask for their name. It's not required.
Chair could browbeat them into submission.
Yeah.
Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Is there some concurrence on, on that?
So, D one would read something like, "Each person who wishes to speak is invited to the lectern, asked to state their name and city of residence."
Oh, the chair requests, the chair invites them requesting their name and city of residence, the chair can request all day long, and that doesn't necessarily speak to the requirement of compelling someone to give it, so, but the chair will request, you know, if you could, be as kind as to state your name and your city of residence for the record, you know. How about that?
There's a final precedent for that, is when someone asks you the question, "Do you know why I pulled you over?" And you have the option.
Because you're a, oops.
Yeah, yeah.
You're having a bad day.
Profiling.
Yeah.
Are you writing that down?
I did.
All right, you want to make a motion?
Well, I had actually raised, what was your, was your plan to bring back some suggested revisions for us to then vote on?
No, I think we have time to hammer this out right now.
Okay, what about the previous, I don't want to revisit all those. The pledge of allegiance, was a concurrence on that, that's just pretty straightforward.
Sure.
I guess the more complicated one dealt with on the same page than striking number B six, inserting either.
Article 10, Article 10 B.
Article 10 B, yeah, we're striking number six, and then I would, I would insert C as the chair asks if there are any questions of staff by commissioners.
No, I see, you want, you want that broken out as a, as a completely separate.
Yeah, because I, six didn't seem right, so I would, or you could, or you, yeah, because it's a, it's a separate action, the chair, because the chair is calling on staff to do something, then the chair entertains questions of staff by commissioners, that's a separate action of the chair, because the other one is the staff, is, the staff is doing one through five, so then the chair is doing this next item. Then that gets us to, I'm not sure how you want to deal with the public hearing, because I think opening and closing, and I didn't, did I write down close? I think it's really important to note to close the public hearing, so I think having an opening and closing of public hearing is kind of an important thing, and if you want to say, "Open a public hearing if relevant," that's fine, "Close a public hearing if relevant," that's fine too, those should be in there.
Who, I just have a question, having been on a couple of different commissions here in the city, is it the commission or the chair that closes the, I mean, of course, the authority always derives from the commission itself, but.
The chair has the authority to run the meeting, so.
But we've all been in meetings where the chair forgets to do that, or doesn't, or gets distracted.
Never in my tenure.
(laughing). Present company excluded to my right.
But, but you know, in a really contentious issue, that, that could become, that could become a point of order, that someone, I think it's really important, unfortunately, to be fairly precise on some of those things.
Sure, there could be a project where we hear the same comment from 50 different people, and it just becomes repetitive, and so this body could, could stand up and say, "Is there any more comment other than what we've just heard?" If you didn't hear anything, then you could.
The chair's got some power to direct the discussion that way, to direct the hearing. Anyway, so, so where it says, "Chair calls on applicant, councilor, agent, blah, blah, blah," something about relevance to the, the public hearing. One I forgot to ask, number two, C two says, "attempt to prove," that was interesting language. In fact, all this, I thought, "attempt to prove the granting request will be in the public interest," that seemed a fairly high bar to me.
It sounds to me like that's the dispensary clause. So if somebody shows up with something that's rather controversial, that may be not prohibited by city camp, by, you know, city code, there, there may be, just the nature of the request would place a higher standard of proof or evidence, so.
Yeah.
You know what I'm saying? If you want, if you want to open a, if you want to open a, a fruit stand or a produce market on Main Street, there's probably, as everybody understands, how that could help, a gogo bar, you know, probably has a little, so they may want to demonstrate why Placerville, you know, needs another on-sale general or on-sale beer and wine license on Main Street.
I would prefer demonstrate as opposed to attempt to prove.
I, I agree.
I'm sorry about wordsmithing, but I just.
Yeah, that's, that's the first word that came to my mind. It's not the burden of proof, it's to show evidence, whether it's overwhelming or underwhelming that this is.
Yeah.
This is the reason.
Yeah, I think demonstrate would be a better word.
Yeah, I agree a little bit, I'm struggling with. Each of us as planning commissioners, or, you know, at risk of speaking for everyone, we might have different opinions about different occupancies and uses, and that's, I think that's a, you know, a can we don't want to open, in terms of, it's just our, our preferences and desires and our histories, and, and I think we need to kind of stay a little more focused on, you know, staying as, what's the word I'm searching for, just kind of as generic as possible, evenly looking at each kind of occupancy or use, rather than just bringing our personal.
Objective, trying to agree with it as objective as well. The when necessary gives us, doesn't say you have to do this all the time, this isn't always applicable, so that helps, but I don't like that attempt to prove, I like to demonstrate better if, if that's agreeable.
So, to be clear, we're going to change that wording to demonstrate, but leave in when necessary?
Yeah, I would, I would do that, I would say demonstrate when necessary, because it's not always necessary, the granting of the request will be in the public interest. Sometimes, you know, yeah, I see what you want to do, but it's, still really happy about that, by the way, that's really good. I really am.
Let's stay on task, sir.
So, what is the, the pleasure of the commission here? Do we want to try to make a motion here and collect all of these? Do we want to take some time and revisit it at the next meeting after it gets wordsmithed some more? It's, it's not a, you know, pants-on-fire emergency. What do you guys think?
Well, I ask that we continue this from the last commission meeting, and that was with the understanding that we'd leave this room with camera-ready copy, so I'd like to see us, I mean, whether or not the process is, is going to take a little time, I think we should leave this room with the language we want tonight.
Anybody else?
Then let's do it one item by, by item.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay. Prove it, change it, or leave it alone and move on.
Cool.
So let's go back to your first one there, Commissioner Friend?
All right, so I would change item 4D in the second sentence, "The chair shall strike, give public notice, give public, give public notice, and replace that with, shall so announce the time and place during the meeting so adjourned." And just gets us away from that specific term of the Brown Act of public noticing.
Do we have any discussion or consensus? Can we achieve a consensus on that one?
As long as we understand that nothing in D gives us the ability to circumvent the Brown Act. You know, so if we announce the meeting, it has to be far enough out to satisfy the requirements of the Brown Act.
Oh, but that, pardon me for over talking, but we, we could actually adjourn right now and then go look at a site, and that would be announced at that time. That, that, that's, in fact, that's the only circumstance that I am familiar with, that this has been used. It could be used in another way, but it seems to me if the meeting is being adjourned to another time and place by the chair, and it's not immediately following, that that is then subject to the Brown Act and notification again, and, and nothing that we're doing here would do that.
If that's your understanding and intent, then thank you for the clarification.
Yeah, and I also understand, as I understand it, we can't approve anything in violation of the, the Brown Act, you know, we can't say we're going to go around it or do something, even if we do it by accident, it's still not valid.
And I'm not saying anybody here is proposing that, but all of these actions are open to interpretation.
Any other discussion on this item? Okay, if we agree with that language, would you read it one more time for us, sir?
So it would read, "The chair shall so announce the time and place during the meeting so adjourned. Meetings may be adjourned to another time and place by the chair, the chair shall so announce the time and place during the meeting so adjourned."
So announce, okay. So announce, okay. If you agree, say aye.
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 Any ayes? Thank you.
I guess, Andrew, were you going to make a suggestion on Article 9, Order of Business, regarding shall be as followed? I didn't have an alternative, I was not necessarily opposed, except shall is generally fairly restrictive.
I've forgotten where I, I suggested that.
It's at bottom of page 3. You could say, "Order of Business at Regular Meetings is recommended to be as follows," if you want to soften it that way. Or shall normally be as follows.
Typically.
Yeah, I mean, anything, or, or we can leave it and just realize that...
You could change shall to the single word should.
Yeah, I'm happy with that, too.
I think that works, because then we can always change it. You can, you know, if something changes, situation changes at a meeting, we can change it.
Right.
Regular meetings shall generally proceed as follows.
What I think I was proposing was, Order of Business at Regular, Regular Meetings should be as follows. So, it's just a strike, shall, insert, should, and that's all, that's all I'm suggesting is that.
Strong encouragement, but not requiring.
Yeah. More of a guideline.
All great, should.
Yeah, I'm happy with that.
Any other discussion? If you approve that, changing shall to should be, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any ayes?
Top of page 4B, adding slash Pledge of Allegiance to the call to order.
Any discussion?
General consent.
I'm good with that.
Consent.
Aye, yes.
Aye, go for it. I have a question about, it would be 9H, the items of interest to the public, and I'm, I think I had this question many years ago, but I forgot the answer. We typically tend to read this verbatim. Do we, as a commission and staff, and be interested in your opinion, do we really need to read this verbatim, you know, on a night when there's, you know, not, you know, throngs of people, when there's just a couple of folks, and we, you know, we can kind of keep things on schedule?
Well, I, I guess I can answer that a couple of ways. The chair is compelled to announce the item. Now, how you announce the item is entirely up to you. I do see the importance of reading it when you do have a lot of people in the audience where maybe none of them or very few have ever approached the lectern and spoken before you, and that way, it would give them some direction as to the type of content, or lack thereof, if they were going to approach you. So, yeah, I, I understand what you're saying, if there are very few people in the audience, do you need to read it? I think you can dispose of that if you wish. It's there really for the public to view and read the agenda, that's what it's there for.
Okay.
My next comment was dealing with the ordering J and K, and I, I don't know we need to do anything with that since we've already softened the shall to should, so I think we can just leave that as it is.
I want to go back up to H.
Yes.
Can we change, can we strike where it says the planning commission shall? Can we strike shall and replace it with will?
I have to find it.
9H, page 4.
First line H, page 4.
Oh, the planning commission shall not take action on this item?
The planning commission...
Is that the one you're talking about?
The planning commission will not take action.
Or may not, because we're not permitted to.
Well...
Why don't we just say that? We're not permitted to take action, because that's what's really happening, because it hasn't been noticed.
Planning commission is not permitted to take action on any items, any of items not on the agenda.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's what's true. You okay with that?
Yeah, sure, what, is it...
This kind of reminds me of the definition of it.
The word is, is.
So, so I'm sorry, what is the file?
We dumped them both, and, so we're going with, as I understand it, items of interest to the public, the planning commission is not permitted to take action on this item, this portion, et cetera, et cetera.
The planning commission is not permitted to take action upon any issues raised in this section.
On, on any item raised during... On any issue raised under this item, because this is an item.
On issues...
Raised under this item.
Works for me. Okay, so, you want to read it again, Michael? What you agree with for 9H?
Items of interest to the public, parentheses, the planning commission is not permitted to take action on any issue raised under this item.
Raised under.
And if issues has to be plural, or not, any issue or issues under the, raised under this item.
Is not permitted to take action on issues raised under this item.
There you go, I like that.
Any other discussion? We have consent. He said so.
Yeah, I, I think staff supports the, the next, I think the next item that you were looking at was the same article, but the J and K, because oftentimes, we do get speakers who come, the city is paid for their time here, and we want to get them in and out.
Right, yes.
So, but I do take, I do, and I'll just let you know that, that for city items, if it's a city-initiated project, I like to put those at the end.
Yes, correct.
The people who pay their money to pay, you know, applicant coming in to review plans, they should go first.
Agreed.
That's typically the way, the way it works on, under, under my executive secretarialship. But, so, yeah, I like the flexibility of moving things around, and of course, you as the body can do that at the meeting if you wish.
Well, I'm thinking that, that since we have should instead of shall, I think that that, then that's easier to do. We, we, nothing prohibits us from reordering the agenda anyway.
Right.
So, okay, that brings us to Article 10. So, I would strike B6. I would then add C. Chair invites questions and clarifications of staff by commissioners.
This is for 6?
6 is gone, there is a number 6.
In lieu of 6.
So, this becomes D, this becomes, this becomes, I'm sorry, this becomes C, this becomes 10C. Chair invites questions and clarifications of staff by commissioners. That's an action that the chair, the chair does. Then, what was C is now D, and then you reorder everything, D, E, F, all the way down. And then, I would say D, opens the public hearing if applicable.
You're saying the chair, are you striking?
Because these are all the chair, these are actions by the chair, because this is what the...
Actions by the chair.
Yeah, the chair, so the chair A announces the matter next we discuss, right? The chair then calls on planning commission, planning staff to give the report, right? Then the chair invites fellow commissioners to ask any clarifications of staff on their report in the item.
Okay.
That's C. Then D, the chair would open the public hearing if applicable.
Don't we, don't we want to hear from the applicant?
That's part of the public hearing, is it not? Or do we, or do we do the applicant, you could be correct, we actually do the applicant first, then open the public hearing.
Yeah, you want to hear, you want to hear about the project.
Fair enough, okay, correct.
Yeah, and then that way they shut it down.
All right, all right, so then, so the chair calls on the applicant, okay, that was my error, councilor, agent. What is now D, chair calls on the applicant, D2 demonstrates when necessary, right? Do we need to vote on, and we're all good? This is all, so we have consent so far?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, and then, C, I would change, what is now E, commission hears those present, I would change that to the, the chair opens the public hearing to hear those and hears from those present. And actually, I would say, chair opens the public hearing, number 1.
Yeah.
Here, uh, do I even need to say hears those present?
I, I would caution the commission using the public hearing, because once again, this is an, a, a flow chart for all items.
Okay.
Even items that are not public hearing.
If applicable, then.
Yeah.
I mean, I want to have if applicable in there.
Opens the item for, opens the item for input from the public.
Public hearing is a specific thing that we do.
Yeah.
So, I want to say opens a public hearing if, if applicable.
Okay.
Okay? Actually, let's leave this, I'm, I'm, pardon, I wasn't expecting to get into this level of detail. E is going to read, "Commission hears those present." Number 1, number 1 is going to be opens public hearing if applicable. That's what that's going to be. Number 2, each person speaking is invited to the lectern, the chair requests, the chair requesting their name and city of residence.
And city of residence.
Okay? And spell name if necessary. We're all good with that, then?
Looks like it.
The chair then, and then number 3, I'm going to say, "Chair closes the public hearing if applicable." So, let me get that taken care of. Then, what's now F, commission acts 2, I didn't, that was all good with me. That's all I had.
Anybody else have any comments about bylaws?
No.
The chair will act to close that item and move on to matters from commissioners and staff.
Staff added the commissioner's segment there, so I'm curious for those who attended the workshop, maybe if, if you can enlighten the rest of us as to whether it was something you felt worthwhile. I'm talking about the workshop on June the 4th, the historic preservation. Just curious how, if you want to comment on that.
Well, being the official new kid on the block, I found it very enlightening, not only to the circumstances and situations that other cities are going through, but to understand the different perspective and, and points of view, not only from other city officials, but from residents as well. I like to kind of boil things down, distill things down to when somebody says, okay, this is this and that's that, I said, well, I, I think, well, what does that mean? And, and I get a little bit more explanation, I go, okay, what does that mean? And in the end, what, what does it shake out, and what, you know, what does it end up being the nuts and bolts of it? And I thought it was very interesting when we actually got to some of the, the dollars and cents of the, of the benefits of, of historical preservation. I thought the presentations were very informative, easy to understand. My only comment was, some of the issues went by so quickly, again, being the new kid on the block, it was like, well, can we go back and, and maybe revisit this? But, looking at the, the calendar and the agenda, I knew that wasn't, wasn't possible. And the afternoon session was, was equally as, as informative, again, getting down to the, to the nitty-gritty of how and why, and, and being given examples, I mean, you know, concrete examples, here's a slide of this, and here's an example of, of that. I thought it was very good. I thought, for a minute, I thought, you know, this would be a, a good presentation to go through again, and be able to absorb and kind of interpret and understand some of the, the concepts a little bit more, but I thought it was very worthwhile, and I had the pleasure of going on a blisteringly hot Placerville tour down Main Street after that as, as well. That was also very interesting. So, I thought it was very worthwhile, that was my, my take on a good, kind of a good primer as to, you know, why we do this. It's not just to make things look pretty and, and have people come and say, oh, you know, look at these nice buildings, they've been around for 150 years, isn't that curious? But, there's actual economic forces at work, so it was very interesting.
My, my takeaway, I've gone to a couple of these things now, and they're, typically, they're very well done, and this one was well presented. I would encourage those of you that haven't gone to one of these to, to, to take one in, but that's the good news. The bad news is, is I always run out the door at the end, all excited, pants on fire to get involved in stuff, and then you go, well, what do you do now? You know, so it's like, how do you take that information and, and make something happen? It's, it's a rhetorical question, of course, but the, other than us just sharing what we've learned with other people, and having that little voice on our shoulder when we're deliberating things, and I would suspect we're going to, you know, the, the 800-pound gorilla in the room here is, is that we're going to become essentially, I'm oversimplifying the Historic Advisory Commission for, Committee for the, the city, and we're going to have to figure out what that really means and how to do it. So, historic preservation is, has a lot of advocates out there, and we're going to have some, some interested public when, when things are happening. So, we all, I encourage us all to get smarter about historic preservation, and it's more than just arguing about, well, should the wood window be wood or vinyl? And that's one of the benefits of one of these, going to these sessions, is you see the broader picture.
I thought it was very well done. First time I had gone to anything like that. It was nice to see that there were some other fish in the, in the same pond. Cities like Montebello, I think, was one of them that they spoke on, that are facing some of the same issues we ha, we have, and they have not been around as long as Placerville has.
Right.
So, all in all, was very well worth, worth our time to, to be involved with it.
Or the woman from Gridley who was pleading with, with the speakers to help her with trying to, what can I do to convince my city-elected folks to, to appreciate historic preservation concepts and, and, you know, staffing for that type of purpose and whatnot? So, we, we, I chatted with her a couple, several minutes, and, and, yeah, she's, I think she's going to look up every, every one of our panelists and, and probably get as much information as she can. In fact, I convinced her, I tried to convince her to maybe have SHPO, the sponsoring organization who, who did the workshop, to actually do an event in their community, so that, that those folks can attend, and, and maybe their electeds can, can learn, learn more about the, the concepts and the, and the issues that she raises and has interest in. Yeah, I want to, want to thank those of you who had a chance to come and, and see it. For the two members who wasn't, weren't present, we, we've had some difficulty with our YouTube link, and so our IT director has removed the link until we get it back up, but we do have copies of that. George did, did videotape that, that whole event, so we have a couple around the office if you want to check those out. We'd certainly provide that to you. And if you want to segue it back to me, I don't know if you're ready for me yet, but...
Are we done?
Segue back to you is thank you, thank you and the staff for providing a, a great atmosphere and, and accommodations for all who attended, it was very, very gracious.
Thanks for setting that up.
Not to diminish the segue.
Segue.
Not, not, just two things.
There's a rule for segues.
Just want to invite everyone to the Beltar Brew Fest on June 27th. That's two weeks away, and it's going to be a lot of, a lot of good times with good beer, great evening. Speaking of actionable, and actually going back to informational presentations and whatnot, some time ago, not that long ago, we had a presentation on alternative permeable surfaces and runoff, and decomposed granite and paving, you remember that, that presentation? The gal from UC Davis, I think.
Yeah, it was our intern.
Maybe she's on your staff, you have somebody on staff. And I was just wondering if any of that is, is being acted on, is, are we doing anything to incorporate an alternative to concrete and paving over, you know, our, our city and doing something different where, where that might be?
Yeah, under, under the Federal Clean Water Act, the, the city government here is, is obligated to comply with what's called the, the MS4 permit process, and so there have been some changes in that code, and the city received a grant to have a consultant assist with preparing facilitated documents like you're, like you're talking about, and there's some internal discussion amongst staff as to where is the appropriate place to put that information? to put that information? And is it appropriate for the development guide? Is it appropriate in a grading and drainage manual? And so we haven't, we haven't decided upon the final resting place of that stuff. It's going to be referenced in the development guide without a doubt. And if it's not resting completely in that, we will direct the reader to the appropriate source. But it's a great segue because we are, we are doing this. We're obligated to start the first phase of this code change, because we're obligated to change our code to include this type of stuff. And so I don't have a date in which that's going to happen, but I understand that the city engineer will be bringing forward very soon a resolution of intent to start the code change process.
And isn't this something that could also serve like the plant palette?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely.
And the exhibits I talked about earlier with, with some of the-
Absolutely.
So I mean, there it is, here's some examples.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Was that, was that staff? Have we moved on to staff?
Yeah, I've, I've got, I've got a few things. It is nearly 100% certainty we're going to have a meeting on July the 7th. The number of items on that date is likely to be a minimum of one and possibly two. The two projects that we have, well, the one that's, that's most likely to go is, is a personal wireless communication tower at Monopine to be constructed in the northern part of town. It's a use permit, site plan review. And that's off of Meadow Lane Court near Maureen, that part of town. The tower is to be located on the EID water tank, if you kind of know where that part of town is. So it's on that site, not actually on the tank itself. The other item is, we do expect that the proponents for a, a business, a new business downtown, the Outbreak Brewing Company, they have submitted an application for a change of occupancy at 640 Main Street, and that's a conversion of what was an automobile repair building and business and site to an eating and drinking establishment.
That's the one that's across the street from the independent?
Yes, correct.
Okay.
So that's, that's what I envisioned for, possibly for that date. The cell towers is most likely to be heard, but the other item could be heard if I get the material I need soon from the applicant.
Question here?
Just a comment. I will not be present that meeting. I've let Lynn know in advance.
Thank you.
Any other staff items?
No.
Planning Commission photo, are we doing that?
Are there batteries in the camera?
Can we just do that after we adjourn? Can we do that after we adjourn? From a practical standpoint? Makes life simple.
Reorder the agenda?
Yes, I have a-
We shall.
I have a comment slash question, and I'm not sure if there's an appropriate slot for this. Seeing the, the new elevation that we have behind here and not seeing the original one, I, I understand that there was a vast improvement, and they, you know, made leaps and bounds as far as architecture and, and structure and everything. My comment is looking at the, the Boys and Girls Club elevation. I, yes, yes. Not seeing the same sort of, I don't want to say, yeah, there you go. I don't, not popping as much, not quite the wow factor. How do we, or, or do we encourage the same sort of advancement and, and evolution of, of a structure going forward? Does that make sense? Like I said, I'm not sure where the question is, and I'm not sure where to slot this, but-
I can probably help a little bit.
Okay.
You know, it really depends, at least based, based on my experience, both as an applicant and as a planning commissioner, depends on which phase of the project you're at. So tonight, you wouldn't be seeing the, the razzmatazz rock and roll, expensive rendering and that kind of things for landscaping and irrigation and, and those wonderful lighting plans. You, you wouldn't see that. But this, this sets a pretty high benchmark. I mean, we've had projects larger than this one with much more impact on the community and that were, you know, much more expensive projects that weren't as well presented. So there is a, a continuum of, of what we get. But in general, they've been getting better because the technology is making it easier to do better presentations. But we always, you know, depending upon what phase of the project we're at as commissioners, and I'm sure you guys, I think, would agree, you know, we do have the ability, if you can understand what's going on, you can ask them to, you know, kind of up the ante on their graphics and, and the detail that they provide.
Once upon a time, a Supreme Court Justice famously said, you'll know it when you see it.
Well, I, I think part of it, that setting all the technology improvements inside, it, it helps when you've been here long enough to see the accumulated deltas in, say, a building design, because what was originally submitted to us could fairly be described as out of the brutalist school of architecture. It was, it was-
So the design was suffering.
Well, I mean, the, the fundamental design, but I mean, the facade would have looked good on a Department of Corrections set up blueprints.
In Moscow.
In Moscow, yeah, Treblinka. But, I mean, this, and this is intended to be people's domiciles, you know? The Boys and the Girls Club, you know, people are going to go play basketball, but they're not going to live there. And so I think, I think we also kind of develop expectations from that. The other, the other one that I would commend to your attention as it comes back from its commentary orbit is, is that the schools, 49er Credit Union, or whatever it's called now, Sierra Central? Yeah, yeah, there's, that, the original way that was present, presented, while architecturally adventurous, it raised a lot of immediate and polarized reactions. So.
That particular project, the applicant architect has submitted their elevations with the feature pointing the other direction, which was this body's condition that they do so. So they're, they're going to do that. In that regard, we-
How's that look? How's it look?
Yeah, they, it, it, they, they managed to keep the integrity of the sign, which was where they're concerned with, with adjusting that. It doesn't affect the sign at all. The windows, they were able to do it, it, without window, major window changes or material or they literally just turned that, that angle inward, which is basically what, what this body conditioned. Speaking of that project, we anticipate they are, they're likely to, to pull a demolition permit soon for that building. And my understanding is they could be submitting their, their grading and site work prep plans as early as next week. Mr. Walls, I spoke to him, he spoke to you earlier about Placerville Commons. He is moving forward as well. He has not formally submitted yet, but we envision that coming soon. And there was one other item, I've since forgotten what it was, to let you know about the, oh yeah, well, the, it's the Boys and Girls Club. I believe our city engineer will be issuing a grading permit for, to start, to start that work. So tonight's approval of the landscaping would have allowed them to move forward with the verticality of their project, which you may not remember, but, but they, the, and it's in the staff report, but they can, they appealed this body's condition related to when, the timing of when they could submit things. And with staff's help, we, we managed to agree upon and with council's approval to modify that condition to allow them to kind of bifurcate the project into two separate parts or phases.
Well, thank you for the information from staff and fellow commission members on when to get excited and when to not get, not so excited, not yet. So, thank you.
I, I do have a quick question of staff regarding the, the landscape plans we saw tonight. I should have brought it up earlier, but I forgot. I noticed that the, the, in their, in their package, they said that the, their final, actually their irrigation plan and calculations were, they were approaching that as a design build component. And I, and I can recall receiving several landscape plans here that included the full-on package of, you know, design documentation for the irrigation plans. And as an applicant here, I've done that many times. And is that bar kind of lowering in terms of whether or not the applicants for commercial scale projects have to provide the, the irrigation plan in order to get their permit?
Well, this was strongly requested by the agent who was in the audience this evening as to the submittal of that information. And they, they kept, they, they couched that with the, with the concept that, that the landscape irrigation is really only meant to start the plants growing. And then they don't intend to continue on with that system. They believe that the landscaping will survive at that point. With the landscape maintenance agreement, don't, don't feel that the city is, is losing that regulatory hammer. With the agreement, we still have the right to enter the property. We still have the right to, to make sure that the landscaping's maintained. So to answer your question, it was strongly requested by the applicant, and we move forward accordingly.
I just, for a little context for the rest of the commission, you know, typically, you do include that engineering to get your permit because, you know, you got, sometimes you have to go out there and count sprinkler heads to see if it's going to be a viable plan to maintain that landscape. So I think we've kind of, we've kind of opened a little door there that we have to be aware of in terms of a, of a precedence. And I don't want to be calling attention to it. I think the full documentation is necessary. It's difficult as an, for the applicants to do it, but it's what, the way it's typically been done. And I think we just have to kind of have our eyes open for that.
And depending on the timing as to when the landscaping gets installed, granted, we're, they haven't even built the building yet or, or set the, the site up for prep, but we internally here in staff, staff's been talking about this, that if the drought were to continue to next year, and let's say the building comes online, they want to get a C of O, with the agreement that they're going to have recorded, it still obligates them to install and maintain. So what we might envision doing is allow them to defer the planting of those plants until it's realistic that they will survive. We hope, we hope that they get in this fall and can plant when, when plants are dormant and have all winter to, to nest, so to speak. And then next spring, hopefully, we get some water and, and, and whatnot. So I want to let you know that we are, we are considering the drought here. And, and the same holds true with the 49er Credit Union. Their building is likely to be up and running well before the 14,000 square foot size Boys and Girls Club, but just because they're dealing with a 4,000 square foot building, a much smaller plot of land. But the same holds true to them. So anyway, that's something we're, we're kicking around and will likely, you know, implement if we need to. That's all I have.
Anything else?
Move to adjourn, Mr. Chairman.
I think we can agree by consensus, that's a double whatever, we stand in adjournment.